Hey, John.
Not with us.
Hey, Bill. Hi, Serge.
Where's John? Hey, hey, John. It's like Hollywood Squares here.
So I think we have everybody is Alejandro with us. Is mayor. So so tell us, Elise. There she is. All right. We are ready.
Wait, dude, where's where's Alejandro? I can't see her on my screen. All the legends are here. Oh, my South County rules. Oh, my.
Wait a minute. I think we have now two North County people here. So be careful with that.
Let's just be clear. We have two people from Encinitas here.
Thanks. Exactly.
No, you need you need twenty five people from Encinitas to match the power of South Bay and the street cred of South Bay, IBCV.
Well, look out. I I hear our Assembly District and Senate District are coming down your way. And I hear those two people are Encinitans. So look out. Um, anyways, um, this is a this is starting off to be a really good conversation and great to see all of your smiling faces, even if it isn't boxes here. So so anyways, let's let's call this meeting to order. It is February twenty fourth and just after five P M. And this is the regular meeting of the San Diego Community Power Board of Directors and and we are now called to order. Director Baber, could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Please, I'd be happy to. Could everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excellent. All right. So I'm going to welcome to our STCP family two new employees. Tim. Um, I'm going to mangle this name. Mango Lookmott. Sorry. Can somebody help me with how?
Yes, I I can help you with that, Chair Moscow. It's Meg Lamont.
Meg Lamont. He is our new finance manager and he's working with Eric, who obviously knows his name. So welcome, Tim. Uh, that's that's you in the box there. Right?
Yeah.
Well, welcome and thank you for joining our family. Second person is Colin Senatuli. Um, good Italian name since I'm Italian. I knew how to pronounce that one. Director of Programs Colin, welcome. Welcome to the family and thank you for joining us and we look forward to all that you will accomplish with us.
Thank you. Happy to be here.
Perfect. Thank you. All right, let's let's do a roll call.
City of San Diego Representative.
Well, President Director La Cava.
County of San Diego Representative.
Present.
La Mesa Representative.
President Bill Baber.
National City Representative. National City Representative.
I saw the mayor here. She was on our screen.
She's here. She's here. I think she's having a um, she's having. She's here. She's having just an audio issue.
Chula Vista Representative.
President Councilmember John McCann.
Encinitas Representative.
And I'm here, Joe Mosca.
Uh, we have a quorum.
All right, let's do deal with our.
Was I called? I didn't. Maybe I missed my name.
Kimberly, did you call?
I left you off the list. I I apologize. Um, Imperial Beach Representative.
Save the best for last. I represented Serge Dina is here in the house.
We have a quorum, a quorum.
Sorry about that.
I'm here. I'm here.
All right, and Mayor Sotella Solis is here as well. Thank you. All right, let's move on to our first item, and that is dealing with remote meetings. Obviously, we are still remote and so pursuant to Assembly Bill three sixty one, we have to we have to make certain findings to continue to hold remote meetings. General Counsel Ryan Baron, did you want to queue this up?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. This is the standard item that you've been voting on at every board meeting. Um, and these are findings to continue the remote teleconferencing that are necessary under AB three sixty one. Um, you've been making these findings previously. I think that the the social distancing recommendations, both state and local are are in effect, and therefore you can make these findings for your legislative body and your subordinate legislative bodies to continue remote teleconferencing for the next thirty days.
Any questions or comments? Director Tadina?
Yeah, I just would hope that we look at getting back. Well, I've never actually been involved in in-person meetings, but if we could, you know, the governor's orders, the mask requirements are off. I know it's most cities are going back to some sort of hybrid. So as a port, so I know the county has been doing that. So let's maybe you can look at that. The idea of doing hybrid meetings or we we just approved that at Imperial Beach. So but just to figure out how to move forward. And you know, now that the things are hopefully getting better.
I agree. Director Tara Lawson Reamer.
Hey, yeah, thanks. Yeah, I just want to comment. I mean, when obviously I want to see you all in person very soon. It would be wonderful. Um, but I just want to comment that there is still a segment of our population that's under five that's not vaccinated and um, you know, the parents like me who have kids under five in preschool every almost every other day. Um, the preschool shut down because someone had a COVID exposure. Um, so hopefully those vaccines will actually be rolled out in the next couple of months. But I I I know that this for me personally, but also for, you know, a lot of working parents with kids under five continues to be really impossible to be in person reliably anywhere. Um, so I appreciate our ability to continue to be remote so we can protect our our preschool kids and and protect working parents as well.
Thank you. Director La Cava.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Um, am I am I understanding that the board was meeting at the San Diego City Council Chambers?
When we actually, we rotated it among the different member agencies, but I I would say the San Diego City Council Chambers hosted us more times than than not. So.
We have been going back live, but in a hybrid fashion. So board members who were, you know, city council members who were comfortable were showing up live at chambers. And then folks who weren't ready yet could still participate via Zoom. Public could continue to participate by Zoom. So I'll just kind of throw that out there. So let us know if we can be of assistance. Otherwise, I will move the item.
Perfect. We have a we have a motion on the table.
So tell us a second.
We have a second. Um, Kimberly, do we have any public comment on this item?
We do not.
All right. And to Director Tadina's comment and Director Lawson Reamer's comment. Um, I was planning on having this as something that we would broach within strategic planning, which hopefully is going to happen sooner than later. Um, and so we can talk about, um, you know, what we think for the future and how we can accommodate both kind of in-person and hybrid, in-person and remote. Um, you know, kind of meetings and and capabilities for for board members and for the public. All right. So we have a motion on the table and a second, and there's no public comment. So we'll vote on this item.
Director Baber, how do you vote?
Uh, Baber, I.
Director Dina, how do you vote?
I did, you know, I.
Director La Cava, how do you vote?
I.
Director Lawson Reamer, how do you vote?
I.
Director McCann, how do you vote?
I.
Director Sotello Solis, how do you vote?
So tell us all these, I.
Chair Moscow, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion carries with all directors voting yes.
All right, are any items to be to be changed on the post agenda? All right, now we get to public comments, and this is the opportunity for any member of the public to comment on items that are not on our agenda, and you have three minutes to uh, make your comments. Um, and this is not a Q and A. I just want to say from the beginning, but it's an opportunity to to give comments to the to the Board of Directors. Kimberly, do we have any public comments?
We do not have any hands raised, and we have no written public comments.
All right, we'll move to the consent calendar, and we'll take the whole consent calendar, which looks, which is eight items. We'll take it in one motion. Um, are there any board members that wish to take any of the items off of the consent calendar? If not, I'd entertain a motion on the whole consent calendar.
So move consent calendars, item two through nine.
We have a motion by Director Sotella Solis.
You need a second.
All right, and we have a second by Director Tadina. Let's vote.
Director Baber, how do you vote?
Baber, I.
Director Dina, how do you vote?
Did you know I?
Director La Cava, how do you vote?
La Cava, I.
Director Lawson Reamer, how do you vote? Director McCann, how do you vote?
I.
Director Sotello Solis, how do you vote?
But tell us all this, I.
Chair Moscow, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion carries with all directors voting yes.
All right, that brings us to item number ten, approval of the fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two budget amendment and review of fiscal year twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three budget schedule. And our CFO Eric Washington is going to take this this item.
Thank you, Chair Moscow. Good evening, directors. I'm presenting to the board approval for the fiscal year twenty twenty two budget amendment in conjunction with our mid-year review. We're bringing for approval also an amendment to the budget. Next slide, Kimberly. So in January, the board approved a rate increase, uh, which also uh, contributed to a net position that would contribute to our reserves to support unexpected and expected increases in costs or expected or unexpected decreases in revenue. So as a result of the rate increase, we are proposing to increase our budget operating revenue from three hundred fifteen million upward to three hundred seventy eight million, which represents about a twenty percent increase on the revenue side, and the rate increases actually included uh, in that budget line item. Also, an increase in operating expenses to three hundred forty one million upward from two hundred ninety six million. Pretty for the most part centered in the rising costs of energy, as you recall from the discussion during last month's board meeting as related to the rate increase, which contributes to net operating income or contribution to reserves to the tune of thirty six point nine percent. Next slide, Kimberly. And this slide essentially is reflective of the dollar amount of increase in the three overarching budget line items with revenue increasing sixty two, nearly sixty three million, with operating expenses increasing by nearly forty five million, and then an eighteen point one million dollar increase in our uh, operating income over the existing budget. Next slide, Kimberly. So this slide represents categorically the line item adjustments compared to the existing budget and what's being proposed by way of amendment to the budget uh, in the line item of energy costs. As you can see, the increase from two hundred eighty four million to three hundred twenty nine point five million. The personnel cost, uh, there was a a slight, I I'm sorry, professional services, a slight increase by about a hundred thousand dollars to that line item personnel costs. We actually realized uh, slight savings, and that's pretty much due to the timing of bringing on uh, personnel, which we're still in the process of adding personnel to our staff. Uh, but as a result of the timing, we have a slight savings in that area. A slight increase to the marketing and outreach budget line item to cover some additional marketing costs and then, of course, general and administrative expenses, for the most part, remain status quo uh, as a result of the the budget adjustment. So that's really categorically. Uh, there's additional detail, and I would just direct you to the attachment that was included with this item for further detail in terms of of the recommended budget amendment. And in in terms of I'm sorry, was there a comment or? Okay, then I'll continue. My apologies. I thought I heard some someone make a comment. Uh, in queuing up for our fiscal year twenty twenty three budget, uh, we'll spend some time. Hopefully, that'll be an agenda item during the strategic planning uh, session. But I just wanted to for your visibility to queue up sort of the schedule that we have laid out for the development of the fiscal year twenty twenty three budget. Kimberly, I'll ask you to advance the slide, please. Thank you. So this is more of a preview from a timing standpoint. We're in the month of February. Uh, so we are working with staff and taking a look at our existing budget, taking a look at estimates for contributing to the development of the twenty twenty three budget from an operating revenue as well as an operating expense perspective. Uh, and in conjunction with that, we'll also layer in a financial planning portion of that uh, board uh, budget development as we chart our path uh, into the near and future uh, here at intermediate term. So fast forwarding to March, where we'll have a preview and discussion during the strategic planning session will develop. Staff will develop the operating budget. Uh, and then hopefully as an outcome from that meeting, we'll have at least the foundation of the budget set or the baseline budget developed. We'll present a draft of the budget initially to the Financial Risk Management Committee uh, and then a preview by the board in May with the objective of seeking approval for the budget in June during the June board meeting to implement the budget for fiscal year twenty twenty three, beginning with July first. So Chair Moscow, hand it back over to you. That concludes my report for the approval of the fiscal year twenty twenty two budget and the preview of the budget schedule.
Great. Thank you, Eric. A good presentation. So essentially, board members, we have before us adjustments to our budget uh, based on the rate discussion and and the actions that we took a meeting or so ago. Uh, this is essentially adjusting it to make sure that we're in line with what we approved previously. Any questions for for Eric?
Chair Moscow, can I let call-in listeners know that if they would like to raise their hand for public comment, they can hit star nine on their phone?
Sure. Kimberly, do we have any members of the public that would like to comment on this item?
At this time, we do not.
All right. So we'll um, we'll bring it back to the board. Um, if there are no other questions or comments, we can all entertain a motion on this. Director Dina?
No, I I want to thank Eric um, for the presentation, and obviously all of us are, I think, very cognizant of the fact that for our constituents and members of San Diego Community Power, this this issue of higher energy prices is arguably one of the biggest issues that our constituents are addressing and and discussing. Um, and I think we're all cognizant of that. I want to also just acknowledge for our new members, you know, it's been really impressive for me to see the 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 very solid financials of this organization or enterprise um, and to see us adapt and then, you know, move move forward with, you know, these increasing energy costs. I would just like to make the point, I think we're all cognizant of what's happening in in Russia with, you know, the invasion of Ukraine, but energy issues globally are arguably one of the biggest issues right now. And New York Times studied, you know, report recently talked about how climate goals are off the the table right now because of this, right? So this is something that everyone's struggling with around the world and, you know, more importantly, why we have to get back to focusing on um, addressing climate change and and getting alternative sources of of energy that don't harm the environment that we can control. So anyway, that's all.
I I couldn't agree with you more. I mean, the affordability um, of of electric utilities and all of our utilities are it's so important. Um, and 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 we'll continue to be focused on that. And I mean, I I think it's a shame if there's any um, slowdown in the progress of climate addressing climate change, because in actuality, when you look at the cost of energy going up, it's really the disruption of the natural gas supplies um, and other traditional fuels that's driving the cost increases. And so us moving to more quickly to one hundred percent renewable energy and local uh, more local distribution uh, is really the 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 key here. Um, and so that we're we're not basically having to deal with, you know, disruptions because of the fires in Oregon caused by climate change or or freezes in Texas or um, you know, military action in Europe. Um, all of these are important, but they're also the reason for the for the increases in energy prices. Um, Director Lawson Reamer? You're on the.
Sorry, I I mean, I obviously don't want to waste our time repeating what my colleagues say, but I do have to echo. I honestly directed, yeah, I think I've been thinking about that the last couple of days, just, you know, we we if we were in a better energy position, if we can kind of move forward our work to San Diego Community Power. Um, you know, we we are part of the solution to this global geopolitical problem in Ukraine. And, you know, I think it's kind of extraordinary um, to feel like we can do that right here in our own community. Um, and that we actually are in the process of launching something that um, could make that kind of difference uh, for our community, but also frankly, as an example and as a model that could have, you know, global ripple effects and would make these kinds of um, geopolitical conflicts over oil um, sort of not hopefully non-existent in the in the near future and what kind of what an extraordinary difference that would make for for everything in our country and war and peace and um, really kind of an interesting and wonderful way of thinking about our work around clean energy.
Well said. All right, any other comments? Um, sorry, did we have a we didn't have a motion on the table? Do we have a motion on the table to accept the staff's recommendation?
I'm happy to make a motion.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Baber will second.
All right, we have a second. Let's vote.
Director Baber, how do you vote?
I.
Director Dina, how do you vote?
Did you know I?
Director La Cava, how do you vote?
La Cava, I.
Director Lawson Reamer, how do you vote?
I.
Director McCann, how do you vote?
I.
Director Sotello Solis, how do you vote?
So tell us all these, I.
Chair Moscow, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion carries with all directors voting yes.
All right, item number eleven is approval of financial reserves policy revision, and this is CFO Eric Washington again.
Thank you again, Chair Moscow. Uh, again, greetings, directors. Back in June of twenty twenty one, the board approved and adopted a reserve policy that provides for an annual review of that policy to make improvements, to enhance the policy uh, as well as to uh, make changes to the policy. So the proposal before the board this evening is that uh, we make a revision to the policy to essentially delegate authority to staff uh, which I'll get to in just a moment, to allow us to be more agile and to be able to uh, respond fiscally to the unexpected rises in energy costs or uh, changes in our revenue. Uh, so that gives us the ability to move within our reserves, which we've set aside to enable us to respond appropriately should those situations occur. So this essentially uh, the revision essentially provides us with more flexibility to do that in a timely manner uh, with the revised policy. The existing policy as it stands uh, now requires board approval for the use of our working capital uh, reserves. What we are proposing is that the board delegates under certain circumstances to the chief executive officer, the use of ten percent, the lesser of ten percent of forty million of our total budgeted costs in any fiscal period uh, including increases to energy expenses to cover unanticipated declines in revenue uh, posting collateral required under energy contracts as we go out to hedge and procure energy to build out our energy portfolio, as well as fund other emergency expenditures uh, that might arise. So we're asking that that authority be delegated under those conditions to the chief executive officer for the to the lesser of ten percent of our annual budget or forty million dollars, whichever is less. Anything over that, of course, would be uh, brought before the board with the recommendation on how we replenish that at that time by the by the CEO. This revision would also delegate to the chief financial officer temporary uses of working capital uh, reserves just to uh, cover shortfalls in operating costs uh, in any given period. Uh, again, additional uses would require a recommendation by the CEO to the board for board approval to authorize uses over and above these parameters. And then the last portion of the slide, the use of reserves is defined uh, as a projected or estimated reduction in the amount of operating working capital reserves by the end of a fiscal year below the sum of the balance of the operating working capital reserves at the beginning of the fiscal year, plus the projected addition to operating working capital reserves uh, in the budget uh, in the current fiscal year. And just uh, as a as a note, uh, the fight, the reserves would allow us to respond again fiscally for unexpected situations. And in addition to that, access to credit would also provide further support that would enable us to respond uh, fiscally, uh, given those given those parameters. So with that, Chair Moscow, I will conclude my report on the recommendation to revise the reserve policy as as presented.
I'm wondering, Eric, if if you or 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 Bill Carnahan, or if Byron's on, can can explain the one of the the significance of this policy is that we, um, the 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 way in which we uh, bring in revenue over the year and the difference that that we we have throughout the the course of the year. So in the summertime, it's going to be a little bit higher than it is in the wintertime. And so could could you explain that? Just because I think that's a missing piece that makes us more relevant.
So, yeah, and 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 Byron and Bill, please feel free, feel free to to chime in. Uh, but typically, as Chair Moscow pointed out, our revenue streams uh, varies throughout the course of the year uh, based on, I would call it seasonal uh, would be an appropriate term. And typically during the the winter months, our revenues are lower than they are in the summer months. And that's when there might be a need to tap into the reserves to bridge us through sort of those periods, those lows in terms of revenue inflow from ratepayers. So Byron or Bill, I don't know if you have any anything to add.
Well, I would just just like to add, there's really two reasons for more than two, the two main reasons for the for the fluctuations are we have uh, winter rates and we have summer rates, and the winter rates themselves are lower than the summer rates. So that means per kilowatt hour sold, the the revenue is going to be lower. Uh, and uh, seasonally, we have an impact, hot, dry summers. We don't have the really cold winters like other systems do, but uh, you'd be surprised on an hourly basis and on a weekly basis, monthly basis, our our sales varies quite a bit. I mean, it's it's never constant, it's always moving. And so this gives us the flexibility of something unexpected. An anomaly occurs that we may not have budgeted for uh, that's temporary in nature, then we can actually use this to smooth out the bumps uh, and and use it as a management tool in terms of our cash flows. While at the same time, always wanting to build those reserves up, you can see we have a target of ninety day uh, equivalency to operating expenses. We're not going to get there in one year. Uh, but that's that's our goal, and we'll get there in a matter of, we we think in two or three years, we we would be at least uh, well on the way to 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 getting to that number. And ultimately, that helps our financial stability and ability to raise funds in the future. So uh, this is a very important tool for for us. And of course, if we had a a a large shift where we tend to use these funds, we would uh, would that we need to move quickly. That's the reason for this, for the for the the delegation here, and we would come back to you with the at the meeting and say, this is what happens. So that you're not, this is not an attempt to keep you all in the dark. It's an attempt to be able to respond in a timely fashion and in in actually in an open way that we can come back and tell you what what happened. So.
Under this policy, would you come back at the the uh, next meeting, next regular meeting?
Yeah, yeah, the the first first opportunity, let's call it that way, the first opportunity that we would have to come back and tell you what happened, we would do that.
All right. Thank you for that. I think that that's kind of makes it a little kind of is the last. Thank you for that. I think that, that's kind of, uh, makes it a little, kind of is the last piece of the puzzle that makes it more relevant and, and shows the significance of this item. Any questions for, for CFO Eric or Byron or Bill? Director Lakava?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Eric, for the, the presentation and Bill for, for your response. I realize I am kind of new to the board and I guess we're still in startup mode. Are we anticipating that we're going to have, um, this is really a working capital reserve? Would, do we anticipate that we'll actually have a more formal reserve that would be left untouched unless there is an extraordinary event? Or is this the only reserve that we're talking about going forward?
So.
I want Eric to answer that and I'll supplement if we need to.
Perfect. Thank, thank you, Bill. That's a really great question, Director Lakava. So we have had internal discussions with regard to setting up reserves for particular events or for particular things. For example, we've talked about a stabilization reserve. For example, that would allow us some flexibility when circumstances, we may have to review or consider a rate increase, how we might be able to offset that increase with a form of a rate stabilization reserve, which would be set aside for use specifically for, for that purpose. And as Bill alluded to, our plan, our long range plan is to build out our reserves to reach a target currently set at the 90 days cash on hand or operating, operating cash to cover expenses. So at some point, as we continue to grow, as Bill mentioned, over the next two to three years, we should be at a point where we have sufficient enough reserves to start exploring other potential reserve funds. For example, like the rate stabilization, rate stabilization reserve. Bill, do you have anything to add?
No, other than we're constantly monitoring this and as we go through the strategic planning process and, and whatnot, if we can figure out better ways and more efficient ways to use that. But right now, that's really all we have and we're building it and trying to preserve it. We have no intention of using these reserves except for things that are unexpected. And then we want to try to replace them as soon as we can.
Fair enough. Well, Chair, I, I appreciated your comment or your question. And since we're approving a policy, I wonder if we should add a line item that the CEO will report back to the board if the reserve is used at the first opportunity. That's terrible language, but something to that effect.
I agree. I agree. So I would accept that as a motion. So it would be the recommendation of the staff with the, with the addition of, we'll call it the Lakava amendment there.
Somebody please word it much better.
I'll second that as well. Um, do we have any further comments on, on this motion? And Kimberly, do we have any public comment on this item?
No, we do not.
All right, we'll bring it back to the board. Any other, any comments? All right, let's, let's vote on this item.
Director Baber, how do you vote?
Baber, aye.
Director De Dina, how do you vote?
De Dina, aye.
Director Lakava, how do you vote?
Lakava, aye.
Director Lawson Reamer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Director McCann, how do you vote?
Aye, and I just want to thank Ms. Councilmember Lakava on his amendment. Thank you.
Director Sotelo Solis, how do you vote?
Sotelo Solis, aye.
Chair Mosca, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion carries with all directors voting yes.
All right, and that brings us to item 12, approval of the community advisory committee, appointments for National City and the unincorporation, unincorporated parts of San Diego County. Taking this is Rita De La Fuente and Sebastian Sarah.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, everyone. Rita De La Fuente, external affairs director. I'm very pleased to introduce the appointments for our growing CAC tonight. The community advisory committee is intended to serve as the voice of the community. Our CAC members have been essential in helping us connect to the people that we serve. It's been a very exciting time that we've been able to extend our services to the unincorporated, unincorporated areas of the county and to the wonderful community of National City. We've welcomed two new directors to our board and now we're very happy to expand our community advisors. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Sebastian and he'll give us some background, next steps, and then we'll ask our newest board members to introduce their appointees and then we'll ask for the board's approval. Thank you, Sebastian.
Thank you very much, Rita. Good evening, directors and members of the public. As you can see on the screen before you and in your staff reports, our JPA allows each party or member agency the authority to nominate a committee member or committee members and the board shall determine the final selection of those committee members. At the December 21st board meeting, the makeup of the CAC was updated in total of 10 committee members with two representing each member agency for a total of 14 members to accommodate the addition of two new member agencies. Next slide, Kimberly. With that, staff undertook an application process. Applications opened on December of last year and then they closed early this month. Qualifications were based on residence or work impacts. Over 30 applications for receipt, which was very good. We provided an update to our community advisory committee on the application process at their meeting this month. And members will sort of fill in a two, three-year cycle of terms for a breakdown of the CAC roster and seat assignments available in staff report as a question. And then for the next slide, I'll pass over to Rita.
Thank you, Sebastian. So now I'll invite our National City and County Directors to introduce their nominees. Director Lawson Reamer, we can start with you. So we will go in order of the seats, please.
Fantastic. So I am really excited to nominate the following individuals to the community advisory committee. The first is Dr. Peter Anderson. He's a professor emeritus at San Diego State University. And throughout his academic career, he authored five books and over 200 articles. He has been active in our local Sierra Club for 40 years and is the most recent past chair of the Sierra Club of San Diego County. I would also like to nominate Victoria Abrinica. Victoria is a lifelong resident of Spring Valley, one of our county's environmental justice communities. She is an educator, the vice chair of the Spring Valley Community Planning Group, and serves on CSA 128, where she leads a civic engagement mentorship with students of Montevista and Mount Miguel High Schools. She's also founder of the Spring Valley Cleanup Crew, a grassroots organization focused on addressing environmental racism.
Great. Thank you, Director Sotelo Solis.
All right, so my National City appointees, again, we have quite a few apply for the position and we're really excited to appoint Aida Castaneda for seat number 13 and Lawrence Emerson for seat 14. Aida's been active with a couple of things in our community, including the United Low Rider Coalition, some tobacco related initiatives, as well as, you know, making sure that we have, you know, when she was working for a state assembly member, the representation and access to resources from the state of California. So, and, and she's a former Miss National City. So what else could you ask for, you know? As, as a former Miss myself, you know, you're getting two queens for, from one city. So who, who knew, right? But then we go to Mr. Lawrence Emerson. He has been very, very active in the EV community. And I know he always has a flyer about electric vehicles, the pricing, updated data, data points on how far each vehicle can take you. And I think he will be an amazing addition, just like Aida and Supervisor Lawson Rumors members as well. Both of them are very enthusiastic about coming onto the board. And we're excited to have National City's voice at the table through these CAC representatives. So adelante, you know, looking forward to the meetings for them. I mean, we have our own, so I, I always look forward to ours. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Rita and Sebastian, is that it?
Chair Mosca, Larry Emerson would like to make a comment.
All right, I see a general counsel's hand up, so I'm going to recognize our general counsel first. So it's always good to, to keep your attorney close there.
I, I'm sorry for interrupting. I just had to say that Dr. Peter Anderson was my professor at San Diego State and in 1998, and he actually coincidentally oversaw my very first work in utilities back then when he was director of an institute. So I, I just saw the name and sorry, I had to interrupt and say that. So thank you for letting me speak.
All right. Um, I'm sorry, Kimberly, did you say a member of the public would like to speak?
Larry Anderson would like to speak.
Who, who is Larry?
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm sorry, Larry Emerson. He is our, one of the new CAC members.
Oh, oh, perfect. All right, absolutely.
Yes. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, no picture. Oh, I was going to say the bad news is I went to the dentist today. But the good news is she did such a good job, I can still speak. I did, I did attend the last community advisory committee meeting on the, on the Friday the 11th. And it's an excellent core group of people there, so I'm excited to join them. But I wanted to say, why am I here? And I wanted to give credit to what happened 30 years ago at Balboa Park. And to give credit to the people who established Earth Day, people like Carolyn Chase, Chris Klein, and all the organizers. I went there in 1992 and there was a booth there about electric vehicles. They wanted to do conversions. And that got me hooked, as, as the mayor mentioned. And so ever since I've been involved with electric vehicles, I wanted to understand where the electricity was produced. I wanted to understand the electric grid and, and, and how much clean energy we were producing. And of course, California has been leading the way and, and, and making great progress in recent years. And San Diego is also leading the, the way. There's a lot of individuals like the people that did Earth Day recent years, a lot of new groups promoting clean energy. And so I'm really excited. I think there's going to be a lot of synergy from those groups in San Diego to keep promoting what San Diego Community Power is doing, and I'm glad to be part of that. The CPUC recently approved vehicle to grid. That means cars, electric cars that have a big battery and are set up properly will be able to put their energy back into the grid. So I think we need to take advantage of that and we should start testing that here in San Diego. So just like the Secretary of Energy, Jennifer Granholm said, we need to seize the chance, seize the opportunity. And I'm excited to be part of that. I, I, I did have one question. The period that was shown on, for, uh, part of the community advisory committee was June 2023, so that's just one year. Is that correct or is that a typo?
It is. I think we staggered them, so it is one year. But I think in the end, you get the same amount of time. And I think that there's, uh, there's, there's limits, but I think that the two of you would get the same amount of time, even though your term is, is, is a year in the beginning. I think it works out in the end. Can staff explain that?
That's correct, Chair. CAC member Emerson would be joining the talent of an existing term. And then he would be eligible for reappointment by Director Sotelo Solis.
Okay, very good.
Perfect. Thank you so much, Larry. Thank you for, for, for stepping up to serve us. And if you stick around, the next item is on EV rates, which I think is going to be our first kind of entree into incentivizing EVs in the, in the county of San Diego, well, at least in our area. So, so anyways, do stick around. Thank you. Any other? Is this it for staff? Rita, did you have anything else?
We don't, but I understand we need a vote, correct?
Perfect. Yeah, we'll, we'll do that. Kimberly, any members of the public want to comment on this item?
The only hand raised right now is Director Lakava.
All right, I'll recognize Director Lakava and then we'll go to a vote.
Uh, thank you, Chair. One, thank you to our two directors with these nominations. I'm sure they'll be great additions. So I'll move the item. But I also have a question, taking advantage of this agenda item. It seemed last month on the agenda, we actually had a report from, from the, the community advisory committee. I think it would be important to hear from them. I, I know as a volunteer in many boards and commissions over the years to see that a board actually was listening to what I was doing as a volunteer was incredibly important. So I would suggest that we have an item on future and to hear from them. Otherwise, I would move the recommendation.
All right, excellent. So we have a motion. Do we have a second on this item?
Sotelo Solis, second.
All right, so we have a, a motion and a second. Let's vote.
Director Baber, how do you vote?
Aye.
Director De Dina, how do you vote?
De Dina, aye.
Director Lakava, how do you vote?
Lakava, aye.
Director Lawson Reamer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Director McCann, how do you vote?
McCann, aye.
Director Sotelo Solis, how do you vote?
Sotelo Solis, aye.
Chair Mosca, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion carries with all directors voting yes.
All right, let's move on to item number 13, approval of the new rate for electric vehicle fleet, and this is Lucas Utah.
Thank you, Chair Mosca. Good evening, directors. For this rate, just wanted to provide a quick background on, on, on what this rate is and where it actually came into effect. So in January, or I should say last month, SCG developed this new optional rate for non-residential customers called EV HP. EV obviously stands for electric vehicle, HP stands for high power. And this rate plan or this rate structure supports charging of EVs whose monthly demand is equal or greater than 20 kilowatts. And as an added incentive for customers, they can actually choose the amount of power they need to charge their vehicles and pay with a flat monthly subscription fee. So something akin to, you know, your cell phone bill where you elect how many minutes your client has. This rate will have that sort of functionality going forward. It's actually optional for customers who have fleets. So, you know, bus operators, trucks, et cetera. And this rate is meant to incentivize electrification in the transportation sector. Next slide, please, Kimberly. So the specifics of this rate, from our perspective, it's actually open to both bundled and unbundled customers. Serve, you know, serve on various voltage levels, secondary and primary. And then similar to the rate adjustment that the board approved last month, customers on our equivalent EV HP rate would realize approximately 2% savings on our power on service level. And as far as what customers electing to move into this rate have to do is they have to select their preferred kilowatt subscription level. Again, similar to what you would do with your cell phone plan. And if you go over your maximum demand that you essentially subscribe, then that subscription level would, would actually be increased accordingly. The one thing to note is for this rate in particular, customers will pay that monthly subscription charge on the delivery portion of their bill. And obviously, we will be updating our rate key accordingly to reflect this new rate going forward. And the effective date of this rate will be February 1st, similar to the, the rate item that the board approved last month. And with that, that actually concludes my presentation. And I will gladly take any questions or comments.
Thank you, Lucas. Any questions or comments for Lucas? Kimberly, do we have any members of the public that would like to comment on this item?
Yes, Larry Emerson would like to make a comment.
And let's recognize him.
Hello, I'm back and you can hear me?
We can hear you.
Yes. I'm interested in, you know, when I charge my electric car, I used to just charge a night before I had solar and I
I used to just charge a night before I had solar and I had a battery back. Now I can choose when to charge it, when there's maximum sunshine and/or when my battery is charged up and minimize my greenhouse gases. Is there any incentive for these EV charging rates to discourage charging during the, you know, the peak time in the evening? And encourage it to charge during when there's a lot of excess sunshine or during off-peak? Could you please explain how this program works?
Well, that's a good question. So this is an opportunity for public comment, but if your comment is done, what I can do is after it is done, I can ask staff to answer that question. So I do think it's a good question. So are you done with your public comment?
Yes, I think it's important to think through those kind of issues and ideas.
Awesome. Thank you, Larry. Do we have any other public comments?
No, there are no more public comments.
All right, Lucas or anyone on staff want to answer that question? I thought that was a pretty good question.
I'll gladly answer the question from Larry. So Larry, more than likely. I'm assuming you are taking service on a, on some sort of an EV rate. Whether that is EV TOU or EV two, two or EV two five. And according to the rate differentials between your on-peak, your off-peak and super-off-peak. You can clearly see that if you were to elect to charge your vehicle during on-peak hours. You would definitely pay more for it than you would otherwise pay during super-off-peak hours or off-peak hours. And so it within the existing residential EV rate structures themselves. The differential makes it such that, you know, you could charge your EV during on-peak hours. But by doing that, you are essentially being exposed to higher charges. And de facto being, you know, being discouraged, if you will, if the price signal is anything, it's essentially telling you to not charge it during the on-peak hours. And that structure currently exists, I would highly recommend that you visit our rate key that's published on our website. And you can see those rate differentials articulated there.
Thank you, Lucas. Any other questions on this item?
No, so tell us the list move for approval.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second? I'll second.
We'll second.
All right, we have a second by Baber. Director Baber, let's vote.
Director Baber, how do you vote?
Aye.
Director Dina, how do you vote?
Dina, aye.
Director LaCava, how do you vote?
LaCava, aye.
Director Lawson Reamer, how do you vote? Director McCann, how do you vote?
McCann, aye.
Director Sotelo Solis, how do you vote?
Sotelo Solis, aye.
Chair Moscow, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion carries with all directors voting yes.
All right, we're on to item number fourteen, approval of our proposed twenty twenty-two Padres sponsorship agreement. And we entered into agreement with Padres last year, but I think it was only for half a year. So excited to have this kind of partnership. I think it pays back in dividends for this organization. So here to talk about this agreement is Lee Freeman, who I believe negotiated agreement last time and this time.
Good evening, Chair Moscow and Board members. Yes, and thank you for the brief introduction. We did have a wonderful partnership with the Padres. That was basically the last half of the twenty twenty-one season. And are presenting to the board today for approval, a full season package for twenty twenty-two. As a bit of background here, you know, we've heard from our own consultants and marketing experts that building our brand by partnering with trusted institutions in the community is a really important way. Not just to, you know, get our name ID out there, but also to build that trust with individuals and businesses in our region. And I don't think there's a more beloved or trusted brand in our city right now in our county right now than the San Diego Padres. So we were able to enter into a sponsorship agreement in August of twenty twenty-one. That had a various types of marketing efforts associated with it, but we're able to develop some really key unique assets, including the Tonight's Lights feature. Which at the beginning of each home game, a home evening game or night game. We were at, put onto their giant screen as a proud power provider for the San Diego Padres with the system. So a really fantastic asset there. We also had plenty of in-stadium advertising banner as an email blast as well as some social media posts as well. As well as a sweet night and a ticket bank, which we donated to the Monarch School. For that half-season cost, we paid sixty thousand dollars. And as part of the negotiation for that half-season. We requested that if we were to go to a full season, that it would simply just be a doubling of said costs. As sort of a basis to start the negotiation on. Next slide, please. So I wanted to make sure that you saw some of our highlights from the twenty twenty-one season and a full recap report is attached to the agenda. So this is just pulling out some bits of information from there. So if you would like to see a full recap, that is going to be in your full agenda packet. But wanted to go over some of the metrics that we saw from the twenty twenty-one season. And I'd like to say, and I think this is in a slide further on, that the Padres had a stellar season from attendance perspective last year. Even though I think for all of us who are Padres fans, might have been disappointed with the way the season ended for the Padres. There it was a, it was the third most visited stadium in the MLB last year. And had great metrics for customer and ticket holder engagement. So we had a full LED takeover for six games, Padres home games. You can see the dates below and saw an attendance of two hundred and seventeen thousand. I know it might be hard to see on your screens, but you'll see that on those LED boards, it's the San Diego Community Power logo. Next slide, please. We also had the Tonight's Lights, as I mentioned before. So each home game, for a night game, we had a PM announcement of SDCP as a proud power provider for the San Diego Padres. And this is something that was a unique asset that was developed in partnership with the Padres with help from our friends over at Civilian. Next slide, please. For the in-stadium televisions, we had El Bar branding on all the televisions. Again, great way to make sure that as people are walking in and around the stadium, they're seeing our our logo and our name right there on the television screen. And that was a really great way to make sure that as many eyes as possible are starting to get used to our logo and used to our name. And you can see that for the fourteen games that we had El Bar branding, a total attendance of five hundred and twenty-two thousand. Next slide, please. We also had some email blasts and digital advertising on the Padres website as well. These are, you may have recognized these assets from our phase two commercial launch campaign. We'll be looking to refresh these designs for the upcoming season. But again, a great way to just make sure that we are in person, in digital, and really getting a full exposure to all the people who are tuning into what the Padres are doing. Next slide, please. I think it's really great to see, you know, personally as a Padres fan, just how much their engagement has gone up over the years. I think we're entering a golden era for the Padres, probably not seen since the Tony Gwynn days. Their social media presence has increased dramatically. As you can see on the right-hand side of the screen, you know, significant increases in viewership. And ranked as the third highest attendance for MLB stadiums last year. So, you know, not only do we have a jewel in Petco Park, which I've been to a couple of baseball stadiums out there. And, you know, I'm not necessarily an expert in all that, but other people have said one of the nicest stadiums in the United States. So it is great to see how even during the COVID pandemic, we were getting incredible just an incredible amount of people in the stadium and enjoying our city. Next slide, please. So I want to talk a little bit about what we negotiated for the twenty-two sponsorship. We are moving forward with a asking for approval for a full season. But also an additional asset, which I think is absolutely incredible, is a game day giveaway on June eighth of a baseball cap. It's a Padres player's cap with a player to be announced, which will have not just the Friar's logo on it. But also our logo on the hat itself, thirty-five thousand units to be given to people who will go to the stadium that day. And basically, we're making thirty-five thousand walking billboards for our organization. I know that, you know, Padres hats are incredibly popular, having our name to be on that hat associated that way. With a Padres player, I think is an incredible opportunity to build that trust, get our name out there. So we're looking for a total commitment for the twenty twenty-two season of a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And we've actually increased some of the assets from the twenty twenty-one season as well. So we're going to be at a total of forty combined games for the LED and grandstand advertising, up from twelve games for a one-half season. So an increase there. Again, that June eighth game day giveaway Padres hat, any extra hats, by the way, we'll be able to have. And I think we're ordering a little bit more than what is expected to give away. So we'll be able to have some hats on the side as well to make sure to give away at our own events and booths. We'll have onsite kiosk activation during the game day giveaway, as well as the ability to host a press conference during the game day giveaway. So more ability to get attention to San Diego Community Power and the partnership we have with the Padres. And we're also adding additional social media posts, including the Padres promotion of those posts as part of this overall agreement. The one thing that we removed from the twenty twenty-one agreement to the twenty twenty-two agreement was the ticket bank. I think as we went through that process, we realized we should really be developing a ticket policy first before we have tickets that we potentially could give away. So I think we're going to work this season with our General Counsel on potentially developing a ticket giveaway policy to make sure that you know, there are no issues with the way that a public agency can make sure that we're giving away tickets away in a fair manner. Next slide, please. So this is a mock-up of the game day giveaway as the Padres player hat. As you can see, this has already been posted to the as a section for the Padres website, but here's a mock-up of it. It's San Diego Community Power logo right there on the side of the hat. I think it's a fantastic opportunity for us to, again, create thirty-five thousand walking billboards out there with our name on it. People be able to say, oh, that's great, San Diego Community Power, who's that? Who are they? What do they do? Get, get, sort of drive that, drive the name ID. And June eighth being right after we finish our enrollment of the cities of Chula Vista and City of San Diego, couldn't ask for better timing. As people are starting to receive their first bills with our service on them. So once the player is announced, the reason we can't announce the player right now is because there's still a player strike happening at the MLB. So there, we can't announce the player yet. We'll be able to advertise and promote the game to give away through our own channels up and through the June eighth giveaway. And I think that should be the final slide, if there's one more. Next slide.
There's not another slide.
Yeah, okay, good. Okay, so I'm happy to take any questions. I think also we have a member from the partnership team over at the Padres here in attendance. Ryan Thorupson, who AKA goes as Thor. And so if you have very specific questions for the Padres, I think we have somebody here who can answer them, but happy to take any questions you might have.
He didn't, Thor want to say anything? Is that why he's here or just to receive questions?
I think just to receive questions, but if Thor, if you wanted to say anything, I think we'd be happy to promote you and you can say your piece.
Can you guys hear me?
We can hear you.
Well, I just wanted to say thank you and appreciate the partnership we had in twenty twenty-one. And we're really excited to push forward and hopefully gain approval for the twenty twenty-two partnership.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you for being here to answer questions as well. Thank you, Lee, for negotiating this agreement and putting it before us. So we have, I'm not sure who put their hand up first, but I'm going to recognize Director Baber because he's closest to me in this box here. I'll recognize him first.
Lee, I just, did you see we're playing the Mets that night? And we'll have all those New York fans in the audience on June eighth. So we're going to have to get there early and wear those darn hats so the New York fans don't overpower us.
So every year, my in-laws come out, they are New Jersey. To a Mets game and they force me to sit in the Mets section. And every year, I hope to God that nobody recognizes me. So this year, I'm sitting with the fans, Padres side.
Yeah, you can tell your in-laws, oh, it's my job. I can't sit with you.
I'm going to use that excuse from now on, Bill. Thank you so much, Director Baber.
Thank you, Bill. Director Sotelo Solis.
Thank you so much, Chair. I think this is a great opportunity. I too agree, that is a very trusted brand. The only other brand that is more trusted is that of firefighters. So if we get a firefighter hugging a light bulb or, you know, maybe doing something. I think we can also to continue to build that trust in the community. But I'd say anytime we can do the name ID and the recognition, it's repetition, repetition, repetition. So I think in this, and I know we're going to be talking about our strategic plan. I think this needs to be part of a bigger conversation to how we roll out this name ID as well as just what our mission is. As one of the newer members to the board, I would love to be able to share in three bullet points. Why, you know, why this organization, why National City? And how it's helping the greater good, you know? And so I think as we talk with our Padres partners, we know that it's not just about the transaction. They also too believe in energy efficiency. They also too believe in, you know, making our community cleaner and healthier. So I think however, we can cross-promote those efforts. I know we're sponsoring. But I would love to hear, you know, more than just, hey, we're giving out a hat. But really speaking to, you know, they do and have great recycling, you know, programs there onsite. You know, the energy efficiency methods with which they have built into the stadium when IBW was working on the stadium. So I think, I think those are the elements that we should highlight. So Thor, if you have a list. I think it's again, why we choose them and why we're partnering, I think needs to just be emphasized more, not just for the hat. Not just for the player of the day, but even more so because we believe in this regionally. I don't know if you had any thoughts on that. We're good. And then I just have two more comments. The freebies do work. I would love to, as we start discussing the policy or how we invest these resources, I think it's really important that we balance it, you know. We are sponsoring a major MLB organization. But even five hundred dollars goes a long way with the Little League or the softball teams. To the Girl Scouts and, you know, PTAs. And those, that is our bread and butter. Right now, this, this is good because it's kind of getting us out there with a big splash. However, I would really like to have the additional conversation of those smaller donations. And I know that we do have something, you know, in the work, so not a big deal at this point in time. Love to see maybe some women's team also to getting the push, seeing that gender parity. We do have the new football wave, football, el club, the football for the women. So love to see that. And then just lastly, the day of the actual game. Will there, I heard the ticket portion, but I wasn't sure. Will the organization, San Diego Community Power, have tickets to give away to that day?
We don't have tickets to give away for that day. We had, we're going to be activating the kiosk on that day. So we'll have an informational booth set up as part of the events of that whole day giveaway, as well as a press conference. But we will not be, we will not have tickets to give away as part of that.
Okay, the only, only reason is if we can maximize the allies that are there. So when we actually have our community events, they're wearing that hat. I know you said we're going to have overprints, which is good. So then we can continue that messaging. But if there's any group tickets that can be provided for the EJ or, you know, EV groups that we are, you know, partnering with. Or me, I think it would be a great opportunity to really say, look, we are, we are all part of this. And here's a, you know, if it's even in the nosebleeds, sometimes that goes, that goes far. So that concludes my comments. Thank you, Lee. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Lee, did you want to say anything about in terms of Director Sotelo Solis's comments on just kind of the linking up more with the on just kind of the, the linking up more with the, the values, the environmental sustainability values?
No, I think it's a fantastic point and it's something that we will definitely be exploring more with the Padres. So we have had conversations with them around Power 100. I know those conversations are going well. So we know that the Padres are committed to sustainability and we plan on making sure that it is a message that's going both directions. You know, the Padres obviously should be very proud about the work that they're doing with us, the same way that we're proud about the work that we're doing with the Padres. And I think linking those environmental messages as part of the overall, overall relationship is a, an important component of what we're aiming for.
Excellent. Director, to Dina?
No, first, first, it's, it's actually brilliant. I said, started last year, it's a really, really brilliant partnership. And, you know, in terms of street cred, it's exactly the kind of branding partnership you want with clean energy, right? And, and, and good causes. So, you know, kudos to the Padres, but also, you know, the team here that made that happen. It also shows how great the logo is because it looks really good on that hat. So then the subsequent question is where's my trucker, bro dude trucker cap with the San Diego Community Power logo on the front? Because dude, we need one. So seriously, don't underestimate the power of cool trucker hats we hand out, at least to our own board members. So that's the, the second thing is, you know, I run a small nonprofit with a $2.5 million budget. We spent today talking to my social media and marketing staff about, you know, marketing and how, you know, the value and what it costs. And then the impact, right? And so this is all brilliant. I guess the question Lee is, and how do you measure impact? Are we doing surveys? Are we, you know, I get it, branding and marketing take a long time and it's consistent and you have to really do this. But are, are we measuring impact? And is there a way to sort of like evaluate?
No, we absolutely, we absolutely are. Yeah. So we have a, we have a relationship with an organization called C Change, which is going to be doing basically a, a, an impact, a sort of name ID and impact study at the conclusion of our phase three enrollment to sort of see how are we doing in, in that direction of making sure we become a known and trusted entity? And that's really, you know, one of the tenants of our larger marketing strategy isn't just to spam ourselves out there. It is to create a sense of trust and, and local pride. I mean, that was part of our phase two strategy, part of our phase three enrollment strategy is to build that sense of pride about being a, a member and a customer of San Diego Community Power that you are, you know, doing right by the environment, making, you know, you're getting competitive rates, but that it's a local organization that you can be proud in.
Well, you know, I think it goes back to the whole street cred thing in San Diego. And, you know, very few government agencies actually try to do that, right? Actually communicate with people at their, at their level. It's something that government's good at. So, you know, I think Alejandro's comment about other sports teams, there, there isn't a reason why we couldn't be doing these types of deals in terms of making sure our women's professional soccer league, you know, is, is buying Green Tower as well, right? Like there's that sort of reciprocity in these partnerships because it's a, it's a great model, not only in San Diego, but nationally, internationally, right? To show that, you know, sports, whether it's a World Surf League during their professional surf contests in San Diego Oceanside, et cetera. But, you know, so again, I, you know, obviously you guys have thought about that already, but, you know, hats off to, on this partnership and looking forward to continued more innovative partnerships.
Director Baber?
I just want to announce what we were talking. I went online and bought a ticket to that game because that hat is going to be worth it. And you guys will all be jealous if I'm the first one with that hat.
Kimberly, do we have any public comment on this item?
No, we do not.
All right, I'll take it back to the board. Yes.
Moved, moved to approve and challenge accepted, Mr. Baber.
I probably could sell it on eBay for a profit.
All right. So we have a motion. Do we have a second on this?
I'll second it, Mr. Baber.
All right. So we have a motion. We have a second. Lee, I think your item was very successful tonight. We have a motion and a second. Do we have a, let's vote.
Director Baber, how do you vote? Director DeDina, how do you vote? Director Lakava, how do you vote? Director Lawson Reamer, how do you vote? Director McCann, how do you vote?
McCann, aye.
Director Sotello Solis, how do you vote?
Sotello Solis, aye.
Chair Moscow, how do you vote?
Yes.
She carries with all directors voting yes.
Thank you, Thor. Thank you, Lee.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, guys. Let's move to the last item on our, on our agenda, which is update on CEO search ad hoc committee efforts. And Director Sotella Solis is going to take this item.
All right. Thank you so much, Chair. I do have a presentation, quick update on behalf of the ad hoc committee, which included member Baber and member Padilla. Fortunately, we, it was a twosome on Tuesday along with Bill and the recruiter. And we were, we had a great day of fun-filled interviews, but also lots of very healthy snacks as well to keep us going. So with that, we are pleased to provide the following update regarding the San Diego Community Power Chief Executive Officer Recruitment. The ad hoc committee interviewed five CEO candidates and selected three individuals to be interviewed by the full San Diego Community Power Board of Directors. The Community Advisory Committee and the San Diego Community Power staff each selected two people to represent them during the interview process on, during the interview process. The CAC representatives are Matthew Vasilakis and Eddie Price. The staff representatives are Cody Hovin and Laura Fernandez. These four individuals will have an opportunity separate from the board to meet and ask questions of the three finalists candidates. Information packets will be sent to the board members, CAC representatives and staff representatives a few days before those interviews. The CAC representatives have already signed confidentiality forms and the staff representatives will also be asked to do the same. And so that concludes the, the, the formal presentation. I do have a second point, but I just wanted to see if there are any questions on this first person, their chair.
Any questions for, for the director? Doesn't look like any. Do you want to proceed?
Matthew Vasilakis has his hand raised.
Why don't we, why don't we take public comment after Director Sotella Solis finishes her presentation, her comments?
Great. Thank you. And then just the second one. I know we were trying to, you know, adhere to the timeline that we had approved as a board at the last meeting. And I did want to propose, I know we were having a hard time for that March 2nd date as my entire crowd here is giggling in the background. I don't know what happened in the other room, but they are really laughing. So if you hear them, that ethereal child laughter is always amazing. But to that end, March 2nd was, we were finding some challenges. So I would like to propose that Friday, March 5th, which was the set date for our strategic plan that because most of us have already RSVP'd yes for almost a full day of fun strategic planning. If not a good portion of it, I'd like to suggest that we poll our audience to see if Friday can be that alternative date, but that we move quickly and we do not delay this process because we really want to adhere to the timeline as proposed. And again, we, we have CAC members and staff members and even the candidates themselves and all of the board members and other support teams on the ready. But we, I would really like to seek that support from the dais here and kind of moving forward with that alternate date polling our audience for Friday. Now, what was going to be our strategic plan now becomes strategic planning for the CEO. We just kind of narrow it down, but that's my ask of the, of the board, their chair.
Look at you, Alejandro, problem solving. I, I think that's a, that's a, that's an excellent solution to a problem. The problem being that, that we, we had a little bit of a kind of obstacle with getting everyone together for the interviews, which was already scheduled, but it sounds like we had a, a good amount of people for the strategic planning. Know that that strategic planning session has been something I've been wanting to hold for, forever. And so I'm really, I think it's a great, but, but I, I am, well, well, we can, we can always reschedule it as soon as possible because I think that's important too. Let me go recognize Director Tara, Tara Lawson Reamer.
Uh, thank you so much, Director Solis. I really, I'm so grateful for all of your leadership. It sounds like you guys are moving forward and doing an amazing job and really excited to meet the candidates. Um, as for the Friday, I would be able to attend, starting at one o'clock if we wanted to begin the interviews then on that Friday afternoon. So that would, I, I'm not, I was not available in the morning, but I would certainly be available Friday afternoon. So if, so that's my answer to your poll. I, and I love your leadership in making this happen. So thank you.
Thank you. And Chair Moscow, who knows, maybe we could do like maybe two hours before some strategic planning, team building. You know, we, we could really maximize our time together.
I think that's a good solution. Yeah, no, we've been trying to get the strategic planning off the ground for a while, but, but, but we'll, we'll get it off the ground. We'll, we'll definitely get it off the ground and, and hiring our CEO is, 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 is the most important at this point. And so it sounds like we have, we have you on board with, with Friday, the second. And then it sounds like Director Lawson Reamer is saying the afternoon is good. And I'd see Director Baber's hand going up. Is the afternoon good for you of March 2nd?
I had worked it out that on Friday I could appear by Zoom. So I'd be happy to appear by Zoom at, at the interviews. Since I already quizzed all, all the applicants, I don't need to be in the room. I've already done that. So if, as long as I can be there by Zoom, I'm great with that time.
Do we have?
Chair, I, I said that it was March 5th. It would be Friday, March 4th. And as proposed right now, it's from one o'clock on.
Sorry, you said one day, I said another date, and it's actually the fourth. So we, we should clarify that again before we end this conversation. Bill, um, Bill Baber just said, Bill Carnahan, Bill Baber just said, he's good as long as we can have a hybrid where we have in-person and virtual. Can we accommodate hybrid fashion here?
Absolutely. Yes.
All right. So then we have Director Lawson Reamer and Director Baber, Director Sotella Solis and myself onboard. Director DeDina, others, did you want to chime in?
No, I mean, I was already, I, I had just emailed you guys. I was available March 2nd. I was supposed to go to Sacramento, but I'm not going that day. And then on March 5th, I had it on my calendar, so I'm available anytime.
All right. Director McCann, providing that Vice Chair Padilla is still not available, would you be able to represent Chula Vista?
Yes, yes. I, I have confidence though that Steve Padilla will be back though. But if not, I will be happy to attend.
All right, perfect. So, so definitely Chula Vista will be represented. So it sounds like we have a consensus, consensus on this item. Sorry.
Just to clarify, we are talking about Friday, March 4th, since there's a little bit of confusion. And given the, the hours that were being suggested when we were shooting for other dates, we start at one o'clock. What do we think would be the end time? Just sounds like it might go a little bit into the evening as well, or?
So we've, if you could, through the chair, if I could answer.
Yeah, sure. Absolutely.
Great. I know that we, we're looking at a good four, possibly five hours. And what that, why, why we would do that is we want to have the deliberation afterwards. Because the CAC and the staff members will also be doing interviews and, and having those conversations. We want to get their input as well. So I, I think it's, it's not only the, the, that portion of the interview where we get to meet with them, but the, the community component and having real thorough deliberation and being purposeful. We may end early, but I would just, you know, just maybe five hours. So five plus one is maybe six.
What better place to spend your Friday happy hour than talking about a CEO search? So, so we're talking about one to six and that works for me, Chair.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And I have to actually tackle the five freeway to get back up north on our Friday at six o'clock. So no, joking, it's, it's, this is, this is so critically important. So I'm happy that, that we're, we're moving toward consensus here. Director Lawson Reamer, is your hand up again? Did you want to speak?
No, no, I'll, I'll take it down.
All right. So it sounds like we have a consensus on this, Director Sotella Solis and, and Bill Carnahan. So if we want to move forward with that and then work out a time with our strategic planning facilitator to move the March date to another date, that would be great.
Yes. And I, and I believe just as a suggestion, I believe we had the second day of the strategic planning effort in April. I think it was like the 16th. We could actually make that the first day of the, of the strategic planning effort rather than the second day. And, and at least would have half of it locked in and then look downstream for the second day.
Right. That sounds like a good solution. Let's just make sure, because I think the second one was a, a bit different than the, the first one. And so I don't know if the hours are the same. If we could just make sure of that.
Yeah.
And Director DeDina?
Well, no, I just, if we're not going to have the strategic planning session next week, then we should talk about the issue of meetings sooner at the next meeting and what we're, what our potential scenarios are.
All right. Um, Bill Carnahan, can we, can we be prepared to speak about, have a discussion item on when, when we plan on going back to in-person and hybrid and all of that?
Sure.
Maybe in conjunction with Brian Baron, maybe in conjunction with the, the, the motion that we, we actually vote on? All right.
Yes.
All right. We had a member of the public, I think, Kimberly, did you say somebody in the public wanted to speak?
Yes, Matthew Vasilakis.
Let's recognize him.
Matthew, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Kimberly. Good evening, Chair and Directors. This is Matthew Vasilakis dialing in as a representative of SDCP's Community Advisory Committee and one of the two CAC reps participating in the interview process. We appreciate the board's inclusion of CAC representation as part of the CEO hiring process. However, we are concerned that the CAC and staff is being relegated to a nominal and insignificant role. As of now, we are part of an entirely separate interview process from the board and we won't be given an opportunity to provide direct feedback and perspective on the candidates to the board. Instead, it's our understanding that the executive recruitment firm, who has only met with the CAC once and only provided vague and frequent and last minute details on the recruitment process, will be disseminating our notes to the board instead. To be clear, the CAC and staff are fully capable of sharing our thoughts and perspective on this issue with the board and do not need a translator. So we're confused by the arms-length approach being taken with the community on this matter. If there was ever a time we need examples of governments and agencies doubling down and committing to civil engagement, community partnership and democracy, it's now. This will be one of the biggest decisions the board makes in years and we hope the board will embrace community input on a public utility program that was elevated, advocated and birthed from the community itself. Thank you, and we look forward to partnering with the board and the community on this important decision.
Thank you, Matthew. Director Sotella Solis, I'll recognize you since your hands, hand is up.
Thank you. I just wanted to give one last comment. As we, we were, we did our first interviews at the BBK office. So wherever we are at, we are asking for vaccination cards. They literally, the front desk people during the interview process actually held one of the candidates up at the door, did not let them pass because she was very adamant, you need to show me your card. And we were able to get a photo of his vaccination card in order to let him get interviewed. So as we move forward, wherever said interviews are happening, just know that some buildings do have certain requirements. And I just want to make sure our, our, our team here knows to have it either on your phone or, you know, on your person. But just heads up because one of our candidates almost didn't make the cut. So, but thank you again, Chair.
All right. Thank you, Director Sotella Solis, and thank you, Director Baber and Vice Chair Padilla for, for your service on this ad hoc committee and for, for everything you're doing. And thank you for narrowing down the list of, what, what did we get? 30, 35 candidates? And narrowing it down to the three top candidates that we have received. So thank you for that. And we have one last comment from Director Lakava.
Thank you, Chair. We got clarification on the, on Mr. Vasilakis's question in terms of if we're allowing staff and the Community Advisory Committee to actually talk with these candidates? How do we get feedback before we make a decision as a board? Can you clarify that?
Yeah. So I just saw Director Baber's hand go up from the ad hoc committee. He can speak to that. And then if, if need be, General Counsel Baron can time in as well.
Alejandro, do you want me to answer that or do you want to answer that one? Uh, if she doesn't.
Go ahead, go ahead, Bill. Go ahead.
I don't think, we arranged the. We arranged the, um, the schedule of, of the CAC and the staff, uh, to, um, meet the candidates and to give feedback to our, um, professional recruiting, who would then pass it to us. And that was primarily because of the time schedule we had of trying to fit everybody in there at the same time. It was going to be, uh, very difficult. I don't know if, if in this limited amount of time, we could arrange it, um, to have everybody give feedback to every board member. Just isn't logistically possible. It wasn't meant to exclude anybody. It was just, uh, trying to have all that happen in one day. Was going to be difficult and aligning all of the flights of the people coming in. So, uh, Matt, it was definitely not meant to exclude anybody, but it was the only logically efficient way we could figure out to make it work.
General Counsel Baron, did you have anything to add?
Uh, no, I mean, the, this has been previously discussed and, um, I, I know this was also discussed in the ad hoc committee meeting as well. And, and so this was the, the process that's, that's moved forward. Um, you know, the, some of the difficulty is, you know, given the closed session, you know, how, how you do that. And so I think the, you know, what, what the recommendation was is that the, the, the staff and the CAC, um, provide that feedback to the recruiter and the recruiter will provide that to the board in the closed session.
And, um, I'll call it, that's not inconsistent because several times during the process, applicants would communicate things to our recruiter and then recruiter would pass it to us. So, um, the recruiter's been a very, um, reliable ambassador and communicate, uh, and vehicle for two-way communication. So we felt we were just consistent with that.
Thank you. Director Lakava, was that responsive?
Well, I, I appreciate the frustration or the, the challenge of the logistics and the limitations of closed session that, um, I'm, I'm placing, uh, high expectations on the recruiter, uh, to be able to translate, uh, the feelings of staff and the CAC. And I'll, um, um, I'll keep my fingers crossed that it, it is an effective communication. So, uh, thank you. Uh, and I appreciate the ad hoc work. I appreciate, uh, Director Sotelo Solis trying to find a magic date for us. I know it's been very hard. So, uh, we'll go with that and, uh, and hope it all comes neatly together at the end. So thank you very much, Chair. I appreciate the opportunity.
Perfect. Uh, thank you, guys. And this was a, I'm sorry, uh, Director Sotelo Solis has her hand up.
I just wanted to give a special shout out to Kimberly, uh, for really being the matchmaker here to find those dates. So Kimberly, shout out to you and, uh, Bill, um, to, to playing the, the, the match game here. You know, I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to, to, to make the, the match happen, but it's really Kimberly and her 200 emails that you may have received. Um, and, but I think it's that, but I just have to say that, that's the leadership that we really want. Not only as part of our, our team here on the dais, but the behind the scenes. And that's what the CEO search, making it a priority is going to, uh, help set, continue to set that bar high. So thank you, Kimberly. Thank you, Bill, for your attention to this matter.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. So this was an update. So this is a receive and file for us. And that's, um, that takes us to the end of the, the end of our agenda. And we have reports by our, um, management and general counsel. So, um, Bill Carnahan, our INRM CEO, do you have a report for us?
Okay. Just very quickly, uh, an item, it's sort of an update on our staffing, uh, plan. You, you had a couple of new, uh, new folks today. We are actually out on the street for, uh, an office manager, minute slash administrative assistant and a senior regulatory analyst. And next up, we have a marketing manager, an external affairs manager, power services, services, contract manager and power services settlements manager. Uh, our, uh, our org chart was prepared about 18 months ago as, as really our 24 month staffing plan. And we've been diligently working through that list and, uh, you know, with, with the limited staff we had on hand, we couldn't handle all of those at once. So we've been sort of spacing it out over time. And so we have currently onboard 17 staffers. This represents six new ones. We will have 10 remaining after that. So that by the, by the start of the budget year, uh, this plan will actually have been completed and will be at a staffing level of about 34. Just, just to give you an idea of where we are and where we're headed.
Is that stack up? How does that, um, fit with the, um, with the plan that we filed originally with the PC and, and, and even, um, I think we've amended it. How, how does that, um, is that consistent with what we filed?
Well, the, the, this, there's only been one revision and that was, uh, at, at the time, uh, the, actually the second meeting after, after, uh, it was adopted. And it didn't add or subtract any boxes. It just rearranged a couple of categories. So it is pretty consistent with what we had in terms of at least the, the, the overall layout with a couple of minor modifications. So, uh, it should be, should be, should be able to be fully implemented and get us where we wanted to be when we, when it was adopted.
Great. Any other comments? Um, Bill?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Do we have a report from our General Counsel, Ryan Baron?
Nothing to report, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Excellent. All right. We're going to move to director comments and I would say that, um, that it, it is, um, kind of sad to me that we, we, the strategic planning has been moved, but, but, um, we're gonna, we're gonna get that on the calendar, it sounds like. Um, and you know, let me just remind us, uh, it's, it's an opportunity for us to, for the first time to, to meet kind of informally outside of a, a board meeting and really start to talk about what is our mission? Who are we? What are we about? What are, what's our vision? What's our priorities and our goals for the future? Um, and really start to kind of work together as a team, uh, even some team building exercises. Uh, and so I'm looking forward to the two sessions that we have coming up. It's like a five or six month, uh, kind of journey that we would be on, um, and putting together a mission, our vision, our priorities, our goals with staff. Um, and then really trying to, um, kind of build that positive culture that we need to ensure that we meet those, those, those goals in the future. Uh, and so my hope is that we, we reschedule that, uh, as quickly as we can. Um, and we have a phenomenal, uh, facilitator in Lisa Gordon, who is recommended by Director De Dina. And I've been working with her every week, um, along with our, um, CEO, uh, Bill Carnahan. Uh, and, uh, I'm looking forward to kind of introducing her to you guys. I, I know that you guys have already met with her before, um, on the survey that we put together. But, um, really kind of introducing her and, and show, showcasing everything that she can do for us, uh, in terms of making sure that we have good governance and we're moving forward, um, um, in pursuit of our goals. Um, Director De Dina, did you have comments?
Well, no, I think you and I were both, they're, they're, they're strong supporters of our, uh, organizational development, strategic planning. I do want to just give kudos to this board and to you, Chair Moscow, because I think what I see is that the search, the expedited search for the CEO that began last year, um, really showed the organizational strength and resilience of this organization, board, staff. Um, and more importantly, with the addition of two new board members with the county and national city, that hasn't stopped. In fact, our star rookie as the mayor of national city is helping lead that, you know, the site selection process. So, or the, the selection process of the ad hoc committee along with other members. So it just highlights the fact that we're on the right path, that, you know, you can use these types of experiences to help do team. It's essentially a form of team building and shows organizational strength. So again, just trying to make you feel a little better. But, um, anyway, I'm, I'm pleased that we're moving forward and we agreed to do this on March 5th. And we're still committed to the organizational development, strategic planning process.
Excellent. Any other director comments? If not, we are adjourned. We are, oh, sorry, Director McCann?
Just, um, just wanted to thank everybody. I'm, uh, was really honored to be able to, um, fit in or, uh, serve for Steve. He should be back soon. Um, but, uh, I really just enjoy this board. I think it's one of the outstanding boards. I've been on many regional boards and this is definitely one of the best. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Director McCann, for joining us too. We enjoy having you. Um, sorry. All right. Um, let's, let's recognize, uh, Larry. Um, Larry, you got the, it's kind of out of order, but, but I'll recognize you for a couple of minutes.
Well, it's just related to this last item. You were talking about the strategic planning. I want to see if the CAC is involved with the strategic planning. Cause earlier I forgot to mention about different technologies that I think we should take advantage of.
Perfect. Yes, the CAC will be involved. Um, they're going to be involved as we've envisioned right now. They'll be involved in the second part of that meeting. And that's when, um, when we start to put together our goals, um, staff is going to basically come back with some of those goals. And CAC will be at the table to kind of, um, work with us to, to adopt those goals and, and to even, uh, um, work with us, um, do some, um, some, um, team building exercises so that we can all kind of start to coalesce and work together as a, a team and build that positive culture. So thank you for that comment, Larry. Any other comments from? Any other comments from directors?
Well, I just wanted to share, Chair, that, um, I too agree with Serge. We will get to that strategic plan. And I think, um, I, I'm, I'm looking forward to the conversation of those team building. And I think that's what the regional boards, uh, I, we love seeing each other in the boxes. And I think Supervisor Reamer, um, mentioned it, you know, with little ones, you know, throughout our, our various families. We want to keep them safe. Um, and hopefully soon we'll get that vaccine. But if there is that way of hybrid, I think it's a great opportunity. But I, I just wanted to also compliment your leadership. Ever since we've, you know, signed the, signed the deal to, to be part of, you know, San Diego Community Power. You've been more than welcoming and I think that's, uh, that's very much a strength. And I think the strategic plan, we will get there. I promise I won't hijack another one of your dates, but, um, if anything, like I said, we could do a trust exercise if you really want, you know, like a trust fall, uh, right before. So, or no internet. See how we do there, there. So, well, well, thank you, Chair, and, uh, thank you to the team.
Thank you, Director. All right. Um, we are at, um, the last item, which is adjournment. So good night, everyone, and see you soon.